Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting of the Wayne County Commission to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The board is now open for roll call. You have a corum present.
Thank you so much. Next item?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Invocation.
Commissioner Morecki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Darcele Brown is going to do our invocation again. And thank you, Darcele, for always uplifting this group in prayer and asking for guidance for us.
You're welcome. Proverbs 3, verses 5 through 6 in the New Living Translation says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart; do not depend on your own understanding. Seek his will in all you do, and he will show you which path to take." Let us pray. Lord, we thank you that we can trust and rely on you. We ask for your guidance during today's deliberations. Provide your insight and understanding as the commissioners make decrees that will set the course for the future of Wayne County. Let the proposed budget to be approved today be sufficient to meet every need throughout this region. Renew the commissioners' strength and zeal as they continue to serve the people of this county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Darcele. Next item, please.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the Journal.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Ware? Move approval. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item.
Report from the Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate our member Commissioner Colleen in receiving the Public Policy Award from the Ark Detroit last week. So congratulations, Commissioner. Commissioner Colleen was also part of a delegation from our Mental Health Authority to lobby Capitol Hill for mental health services for our state on last week as well. So thank you for all the work that you're doing with our Mental Health Authority. Appreciate you. Next item.
Unfinished business. There is none listed. We are offering of all petitions, ordinances, resolutions, and presentations. There is one resolution listed on the addenda. Item A, a resolution by Commissioner Ware calling our members of Congress to resolve funding issues to provide seniors and caregivers the support they so badly need and to promptly renew the Older Americans Act, which expires on September 30 of 2019.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Ware? Move approval?
Support.
Any discussion? Commissioner Ware?
So my colleagues, what's going on here is, first of all, I received a call like late yesterday from Detroit Area Aging. I was there earlier for my board meeting. We had talked about the Older American Act, which is, you know, really near and dear to my heart, but I know to everyone here. So what's going on is, on the last day of this month, the act expires September 30th, and they're trying to, all of the Detroit area agents and area agencies are trying hard to put a push on anything that we can do. Anyone here, in addition to the resolution, they would appreciate it. What is it, about two weeks that's left? And our seniors, they need the services like transportation, legal services, elder abuse prevention, and other services. So I hope that you would join me in supporting this resolution to our senior citizen, Chair of Veterans and Seniors, this was last minute, and to the Chair of Health and Human Services, this was really last minute. And I need to thank Jim for giving up his lunch hour. Union don't listen, for giving up his lunch hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Moved and supported. Discussion, hearing none. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Ware?
Madam Chair, we can open the board, please, for co-sponsors.
Thank you. Anyone who'd like to be a co-sponsor of the resolution, soon as the board is open? Please vote.
Co-sponsors duly noted.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are moving to page 18 of the agenda, Report G from the Committee of the Whole. There are four items listed.
We're gonna move straight to the Committee of the Whole so that we can vote on the budget. However, let's also go through a couple of the items individually. We have item one. Madam Clerk?
Item number one is approval of the Democratic nominee to the Wayne County Board of Canvassers. Allen Wilson is nominated by the 13th Congressional District Democratic Party.
Entertained a motion to move?
To move.
Moved and supported. Mr. Wilson was at our Committee of the Whole. I do not believe he's here today, but he was at the meeting on Tuesday. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on this nominee? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number three is approval of the Republican nominee to the Wayne County Board of Canvassers. Myra A. Rodriguez is nominated by the Michigan 14th District Republic Committee.
Commissioner Morecki?
I will move approval.
Moved and supported. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number three is approval of the recommended comprehensive executive budget and appropriations ordinance for fiscal year 1920 and the projected budget for fiscal year 2021. Technical amendments 1 through 20 to the Wayne County Executive's 1920 Comprehensive Budget Recommendation and Proposed Appropriations Ordinance and Budget Language Instructions as amended.
Commissioner Varga?
I move approval, and I also need to offer an amendment to it. It's a change on Section 40. The number of the property tax estimate needs to be corrected, and Mr. Abell will give us the correct number for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
It was supported by Vice Chair Palomera. Mr. Abell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As has become a policy, before we approve the budget, we like to take the most recent estimate of tax revenues. And so the number will be increasing from 279.77 million to 279.95 million. And the total revenue in the general fund will be increasing from 582.56 million to 582.74 million. And that's an increase of $180,000 for each of those categories.
Thank you. Commissioner Varga?
Thank you. I would like to, well, let's take the vote, and then I'll thank everyone.
You don't want to be presumptuous, right? The motion is to approve. The budget has been moved and supported. Any discussion? As amended, thank you. Any discussion on number three, which is the budget? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Varga?
I want to thank the Chair for her leadership and also every member who participated in phone calls, emails. Sometimes we've had disagreements over process and through the negotiations process, but we came out on top. And this is the first time that we've had a budget that was approved by all members in a long, long time that I remember. Pam, I would love to see how long that's been. So I think it's due to the diligence of all of our members and our staff and the executive all working together to make this possible. So I really, really appreciate all of you and thank you for all of your hard work, members and otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair of our Ways and Means Committee. This has been a great process this year. We were, we thought it important to talk about the things that were important to the commissioners early on and make sure that those things were addressed. And we did that, especially as it relates to retiree stipends. That was something that we fought for last year, didn't quite make it last year, but I'm so glad in working with the administration this year and the leadership of the Ways and Means Committee that we were able to do that. There are also other wonderful things in the budget, such as another position in our veterans area. So I think the budget is something that was a collaborative approach, and everyone has something, or almost everyone has something that they wanted in it. But it's a good budget, and I want to thank our staff, Mark, Terry, and Mary for their leadership and their hard work over the summer. A special thanks again to the Ways and Means Committee members, because again, you worked so hard over the summer, making sure that we have budget hearings and going to different locations throughout the county. So it's been a great process, and I just want to thank everyone. And of course, to our staff, with our fiscal staff, our legal staff, and our analysis, because they had to weave in everything that we were doing in addition to the regular work. So and I can't forget Mr. Haney and Kelly from the administration, the CEO, Mr. Kaufman, have all been very helpful in getting us to the finish line this year. So thank all the members here. We appreciate your support. And we have a budget for 1920. Thank you all. Commissioner Ware?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just looked out in the audience, and I see one of my favorite constituents, and she's also the President of Wayne State Board of Governors. I know she's trying to hack. Kim Trent, please stand.
Thank you, Kim, for being with us today. All right, next item. Item number four.
Item number four, approval of a three-year memorandum of understanding with a three-year option to renew between the Charter County of Wayne and the Third Circuit Court to define the standing authority and roles of the parties for delivering juvenile justice services in Wayne County.
Okay, we discussed this at the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
We are returning to page two of the agenda, Report A. It's from the Committee on Public Services. There are 16 items listed on pages two through six of the agenda.
Commissioner Morecki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move approval for items one through 16. And if the Clerk's office could be patient here, I have a lot of requests. The maker of the motion for number two, Commissioner Dobbs. For number six and eight, Commissioner Anderson. For number seven, Commissioner Varga. And for items 12 and 15, Commissioner Hades.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the Public Services Report?
Good job.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item?
We are on page six of the agenda, Report B from the Committee on Ways and Means. There are eight items listed on pages six and seven of the agenda.
Commissioner Varga?
Move the entire report.
Moved and supported to approve items one through eight on the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Next item?
We are on Report C from the Committee on Health and Human Services. There are 17 items listed on pages eight through 13 of the agenda.
Commissioner Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the committee recommends all 17 for your approval.
Support. 17, all right. Items one through 17, Health and Human Services Report. Moved and supported. Any discussion on the report? Commissioner Colleen?
Yeah, I just want to let members know, I think six or seven of these are the Youth Assistance Program that we're re-upping for another year. There's also, I believe, three of the items in here are for WIC locations, three or four, where we contract with various individuals around the county to distribute WIC on behalf of the state. Of course, I think there might be just some discussion on number one, taking the one-year option on WellPath. But with your permission, Madam Chair, item number 10 is the approval of Lisa Whitmore Davis as our new Director of Senior Services. And she did come to committee. We had an excellent discussion. With your permission, I'd like her to come to the microphone and introduce herself to all of the commissioners and tell us a little something about what her stewardship of this office would be about.
Absolutely. You're stealing my thunder, but since you did, come on up, Ms. Davis. I was gonna recognize and ask her to come up as well. Ms. Lisa Davis.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Colleen, and good morning to all of the commissioners. I am Lisa Whitmore Davis, a proud citizen of Wayne County and citizen of the city of Detroit. I am excited to step into this new role of leadership to help and support the lives of older adults in Wayne County. I have been an aging professional for over nine years with AARP Michigan and many years of experience in nonprofit higher education and working in the community. I have a heart for seniors. I have a heart for older adults, because I am too an older adult. And I hope that in this role, working with you and to bring forth the vision of Mr. Evans, I want to help create new programs to support the existing things that we have, but to look at our current Meals on Wheels program, how can we enhance that? And also, how can we bring additional services to your constituents across the county?
Thank you so much. And as Ms. Whitmore Davis stated, she ran our AARP for the state of Michigan.
Associate State Director for AARP.
Yes, absolutely, and did a marvelous job. And she's gonna bring that experience to our senior services here in Wayne County. So we are very happy to have you on board. We look forward to working with you. And we look forward to wonderful things and your vision for our seniors department. So welcome, and thank you for your interest, and we look forward to working with you. Any questions to Ms. Whitmore Davis? Commissioner Basham?
Yes, I appreciate the fact she looked to this side of the room when she was making her comments about senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are just truly blessed to have Ms. Whitmore Davis as the new director. Thank you so much. She has done just a great job, just a wonderful individual herself. And I know her husband, too. They're both wonderful people. So thank you for accepting this job.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, thank you. Did I see another hand?
Nope, I'm sorry.
Nope, we're good. Okay, thank you so much. We look forward to your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, where are we? To vote? Okay, we have a motion again for all 17 items under Health and Human Services. All in favor, please vote. And if you're not in favor, still vote.
Okay. Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I've been notified here by a couple of my colleagues on item number six for the Yap Program. Commissioner Varga would like to be the
Maker of the motion?
Sponsor of that. And which item, Al? Huh? Items 11 and 13 would be Commissioner Hades as the sponsors.
Duly noted. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on Report D from the Committee on Audit. There is one item listed.
Commissioner Basham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one item. I would make a motion to receive and file.
It's been moved and supported. Hopefully, members who are not on the committee also received this audit report. If you have not, please give a read. It's very important that we look at what CCS is doing with our jail medical services. So we have a motion. Commissioner Colleen, under discussion?
Yeah, under discussion, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Under the Health and Human Services Report, we did approve the one-year option. There's another one-year option for WellPath to come. Part of that was just very practical for us not to take the one-year option to try to gear up for some other option in three months here and get it going. But there were a number of items in this report, and I hope most of my colleagues have read this audit. We had, I would say, robust discussions, both in audit and in Health and Human Services with the Director of the Department. I think it was good conversations. There has been some things with oversight that have been lacking. I believe the department is bringing on an additional person for oversight of this. But I would encourage commissioners, there will be a corrective action plan that will come out. So you've read the problems in the audit. The corrective action plan will speak to what the plans are to correct that, because a year from now, we'll more than likely be looking at a second one-year option on this. So I just want to underscore the importance of that corrective action plan and that the problems that did come up in the audit are something that will not repeat. So look for that, my colleagues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank our Auditor General and her team for doing this audit. It unfortunately was not an easy audit to perform. There were some unnecessary roadblocks that got in their way, but we were able to work that out, and they were able to produce to us a great audit report, which I think the Director, Mr. Brooks, found enlightening as well. So moving forward with that corrective action plan, it will make our services and their services to us better than it has been. And thank you, Marcy, for your team for doing this work. Any other discussion on the audit report? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on Report E from the Committee on Public Safety, Judiciary, and Homeland Security. There are seven items listed on pages 14 through 16 of the agenda.
Commissioner Clark Coman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move items one through seven from the Committee, Public Safety Committee.
Moved and supported. Any discussion on the Public Safety Report? Items one through seven. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on Report F from the Committee on Government Operations. There are six items listed on pages 16 through 18 of the agenda.
Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number one is going to be, have to be removed. So is the proper motion
Withdrawed?
to be passed for the day or withdrawn?
I think it's to withdraw it. Withdraw it. Okay, given some clarification. Withdrawn without objection.
Okay. Well, I'll make the, I'll make the motion to withdraw this item without objection, though. I'm not happy about it. So this was the contract to purchase our cameras, upgrade our equipment. I do appreciate the Chair's, you know, the willingness to get our, use the tapes, the equipment that we have, to post our meetings currently on YouTube and hopefully improve their placement on the county's website, because we're really, right now, doing the, the public a huge disservice. It takes, you know, you have to be like a web suit guru to try to dig them out of the website. But I heard that that is something that's supposed to be worked on to improve for the, for the people, because it's very frustrating for, I know when I try to find something on the website and it takes me a half an hour to find it, and I keep getting all those other stuff, it's very frustrating. So it's kind of the state of affairs right now with it on the county's website. The reason that, I mean, this is, this was so important to me was that I wanted this budget, and actually, it would have been a great budget to have this on camera and, and really in good enough shape where we could be proud of it for our people to visit it and, and see what we were able to accomplish on a unanimous budget. So I'm sorry that, that we won't have that kind of quality recording, and we're not gonna see it. We would have seen it by October. Now, who knows how long it's gonna take us to actually get quality recordings. So I'm gonna have to at least announce to my people that the, the recordings are available in the state that they're in. I was trying to hold off for better equipment, but now, since that's indefinite, you know, I would hope that we would pursue, and it's something that I've said right from the beginning, a third-party vendor for this, rather than working with a cooperative with the same vendor that works with the administration. All the paperwork says that they have their certification, and yet now, at the last minute, we're hearing that they don't. And so even though we have paperwork to the contrary. So I want to thank the staff for all the work that they did to get this through. I want to thank the Chair for everything that she did to try to make this happen. But I would really hope that we would either pursue, we need to pursue an independent vendor. That's how audio tapes went missing, and in my mind, and that, and that's why I think this is being delayed, is because it's not independent. It needs to be independent of the administration. So with that, item one is, for the moment, withdrawn. Item two, Commissioner Hades would like to be the maker of that motion. And I'd like to move the remainder of the report for approval.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Morecki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I'm completely confused on why this is being removed. I, I mean, I don't understand it. And certification for what?
So they have, what did someone need certification?
I'll let Pam speak to it, because unfortunately, this came up like yesterday. So Pam, go ahead. I'm sorry, Felicia, I'm sorry.
Okay. So through the Chair, this is a cooperative agreement, which means that we are purchasing off of another contract. We were advised by the vendor that their contract with GSA, which is the cooperative entity, had expired. This is an issue also for IT department. So we're gonna work together to determine how to resolve the matter for the entire county, not just the commission. I'm gonna have a few ideas on how to proceed. We're hoping to get this contract back before you in a different form at your next full board meeting. But the vendor advised us that the contract had expired, so there's no contracts to purchase off of at this point. But again, we're gonna work together with purchasing and IT, and we'll get this resolved. And again, I hope we'll have something for you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the crutch of the matter is, we expect the paperwork from the administration and the electors to be correct. We can't proceed in our work not be correct. So, but as Felicia stated, hopefully, we have a fix to this, and it will be before us in two weeks, so we can proceed in a quick fashion.
That would be appreciated.
So. Any other discussion on the items under Government Operations? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item?
We are on page 19, upcoming committee and task force meetings.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Ware? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Nope, 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 I'm sorry. We are on upcoming, upcoming meetings. Everyone, please note the meetings for next week. The Criminal Justice Center meeting is today at 12:00. If there are any changes to your meeting schedule, please let the clerk know in a timely manner. Any discussion on the meetings? Is everyone okay? Commissioner Basham?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. The regularly scheduled meeting on audit will be postponed.
Audit is postponed. Audit is postponed.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure.
Thank you. Any other changes to meetings? Okay, thank you. Next item.
Public comments.
Thank you. We have two minutes to address the Wayne County Commission. Is there anyone who would like to address the Wayne County Commission? Madam Clerk, do you have any cards?
No cards.
No cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Wayne County Commission? Anyone in the audience to address the Wayne County Commission? Anyone to address the Wayne County Commission? If you'd like to, please come to the podium.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
State your name and for the record, please.
Reginald Crawford, President of Wayne County Deputy Sheriff's Association.
Welcome.
To my right, my first vice, our first Vice President, Corporal Robin Hornbuckle. And to my left, Dave LaMontaigne, who's a business agent with Poem and our union.
Thank you.
And good morning, Madam Chair, and to all the Commissioners. On behalf of Wayne County Deputy Sheriff's Association, we'd just like to say thank you for your vote on the contract extension.
Thank you. I hope it was to your liking. I guess so, since your members are here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm glad everything worked out. We appreciate you being here today and all the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone here else would like to address the Wayne County Commission? Next item, please.
We are on new business. There is one item listed, requesting Commission approval of modification number two to a grant contract between the Charter County of Wayne and the Michigan Department of Corrections, Office of Community Corrections, in the amount of $107,000.
Okay. It's been moved for approval. Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Colleen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. In looking at the paperwork on this, this looks like a classic case where the state said, "We want to send you money," and you got one week to turn around and send it back to us. Thank you very much, State of Michigan. So, that's why it's here for immediate consideration. However, this is dealing with some of the, which is going to be, we're going to be talking about this for a few years now, a lot of the jail diversion programs. You know, we have the jail task force meeting with regards to the Miami Dade and all of, so there's further changes coming. This is another one that deals with diversion. So, I'll be asking the Department to come and have a discussion item at the next Health and Human Services Committee about what this is and what it does, because I think we will have a lot of changes in the system coming up, and just so that we can track all of the changes that are taking place. So, we'll be asking for them to come to Health and Human Services to go through this and what it's doing.
That's great, because there are a lot of changes, a lot of work being done with jail diversion. I'll speak to that under remarks by Commissioners, but yes, you're absolutely right. So, it'd be great to have a conversation at the HHNS meeting.
Yeah, our Executive Director for the Mental Health Authority couldn't come to Washington with us, because there was meetings on the jail taking place back here.
Yes.
So, there's going to be a lot going on over the next year or two.
You are absolutely correct.
So, just make sure we track it and understand and know what the changes are. All right, thanks, Madam Chair.
Yes, I look forward to having that discussion in your committee meeting. So, that's a great point. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We are on page 20 of the agenda, item B, Testimonial Resolutions and Certificates of Appreciation. There are 10 items listed.
Move approval.
Moved and supported. Discussion, Commissioner Ware.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott, I have a question on number 10. I don't know if I should address this to you or Jim from the Department of Information, but Detroit Rescue Mission...
Five, you said number 10.
Oh, number five. I'm sorry, number five. Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries is in my district on East Forest, and I think there's another one located in the Myrtle area. So, I contacted Jim to go on that particular resolution, myself and also the Chairwoman, and he said he would handle it. But I see that it's only coming from you, or did our names make it to your office?
Asking me?
Yes, number five is, it says Commissioner Scott.
Number five, the Director contacted me. I am on the Board of Directors, and we have a number of Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries in Highland Park. But if you'd like to be a part of this, I'd like for you to join me.
Well, he did. He must have contacted all of us, because the Chairwoman received a letter for a resolution. I received a letter also. So, when I contacted Jim, he said he would let your office know that the both of us would like to join you.
Fine, I'm sorry I didn't...
So, if you have not presented the resolution, I would love to be on it, and the Chairwoman also.
It has not been presented yet.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Further discussion on testimony resolutions?
Then I want to be added, too.
Commissioner Varga.
I'd like to be added on that, that one as well. Thank you.
Okay, there you go. Detroit Rescue Mission does great work.
Y'all see Jim, whoever wants to be on there is welcome, okay? Because they do great work for all of our constituents.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, Jim, okay. If you do not want your name on the resolution, please let Jim know. If you do not want your name on the resolution for Detroit Rescue Mission, thank you. Commissioner Scott?
Yes. And number two, I would like to be a part of Commissioner Clark-Coman's Reverend Ernesto King.
Okay, okay. Very good. Okay. All in favor, please vote. Next item, please.
We are on item C, memoriam. There are two names listed.
Okay, Commissioner Colleen, you have a name listed here?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioner Scott, do you also have a name listed?
Yes, I do. No, well, I just wanted to mention Henry Lee Gibson. He was one of the 10 Gentlemen. So, if anybody who knew the 10 Gentlemen over the years want to be a part of that, you're welcome to.
All right, thank you. Henry Lee Gibson. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ware?
I'll let you, it's moving slow. I would like to lift one of our state colleagues, Representative Brenda Carter. We would like to lift her family up in prayer. Last week, I attend the Congressional Black Caucus, and while we were there, she had to leave. She lost her son in a motorcycle accident. So, we're going to lift them up in prayer in her son's name. I will submit it to you, Pam. His name is Bryant Candy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this would be on behalf of, I know, Commissioner Hades and myself, because we both knew this gentleman, and it was in Commissioner Hades's district. Vince Burna passed away, and I didn't think that you may have known. That's why I was trying to give hand signals and everything, but I just heard about it, I think it was yesterday. And Vince Burna was a, and Al may want to say some things. I know he was a veteran himself, and he founded Veterans Haven in the city of Wayne. It served Wayne and Westland, the whole area, probably Romulus and others. And he recently passed away. I think he'd had an extended illness, but anyway, maybe Commissioner Hades would like.
Thank you. Madam Chair, sorry to hear that. And Vince was one of the great leader and veteran assistant in help, and he's the founder of Veteran Haven in Wayne that assists all the veterans in need, food, clothing, residency. They have a few places where they could put the veteran in them till they find them a job and get them on their feet, and they move on. And he created a very successful organization, worked with all the other veteran organizations, and really, it surprised me, sorry to hear that. And beside that, he was a good veteran himself, too. He could tell you lots of a story on the thing he was involved with, and my sympathy goes to his family, especially his wife.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Palamere?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to submit the name of Father Mike Cremon into memoriam. Father Cremon was a pastor of both St. Patrick's and St. Joseph's Catholic Church in Wyandotte. He admirably performed the funeral masses for both of my parents, and he was beloved by so many people, just a delightful, wonderful Irish priest who made everybody smile and feel good about being in church. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And then I'll also submit to the clerk, Mr. Arthur Simons from my district. Mr. Simons was 90 years old. He was a member of Barton McFarlane, very active in the Second Precinct over in my district. I've known Mr. Simons for 40 years. His daughter and I went to elementary, middle, high school, and college together. And he was a wonderful man. If you ever attended any of my breakfasts and swearing-in, he was part of the Three Musketeers that I call him, with himself, Mr. Crosby, and Mr. Brown, very deep supporters of me and the community on the west side of Detroit. He also worked at the city in the zoning board for several years. So, he'll be sorely missed. His services were this past Saturday. So, I just wanted to lift him, his family, his daughter, and his wife, and his son up in prayer. Does everyone could please stand for a moment of silence? Thank you. Next item?
Reconsiderations.
Any reconsiderations? Seeing none, next item?
Remarks by members.
Remarks by members. Are there any remarks by members? Vice Chair Pro Tim Ware?
I just want to let my colleagues know that next month, at one of our board meetings, we will be honoring the Detroit Youth Choir. I'm waiting a date from...
Thank you. Thank you. They came in second place last night, which was absolutely awesome. They did a wonderful job representing Detroit and Michigan, and we are all so proud of those young people. So, thank you, Commissioner Ware, for arranging to bring them here so that we can acknowledge them properly from the county of Wayne. Commissioner Armecar Coleman?
Thank you. You know what? We need the young people to bring us all together.
Yes.
Because I think what we saw with this youth group was that the whole city came together.
There it is.
To support them. We even had, I even taught the Republican member of the group how to vote 10 times.
We don't have any Republicans on our board.
How to vote 10 times, and she did it.
She did.
So, we're just so proud of it. We need more of this, to come together as a county, as a state, and work together. And these young folks showed us how to do it.
Absolutely.
So, I'm so proud. They might have come in technically second. I consider them first.
First in our hearts, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Varga?
Thank you. This may be a good start to Wayne County Youth Council.
Oh, that's a good point. I started that, tried to start that about 17 years ago, so maybe we can actually get it done.
When you were youth.
Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. You know, it was announced that at 4:00 today, they will be being honored down...
Campus Marshes.
Campus Marshes.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, Friday at 4:00.
Oh, I thought it was today.
Yes, that would be wonderful. The weather's supposed to be great. So, if anyone can come down to Campus Marshes tomorrow at 4:00 and give them a big Detroit Wayne County thank you, I think that'd be wonderful. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a couple of things I have. I would ask if we could have someone draft a resolution. I'm going to do this a little differently, because I think everyone would want to be on that resolution anyway. A resolution of support for the UAW members that are on strike with General Motors, and there's thousands of them across, certainly across the country and in the state of Michigan. And they need all the support I think we can give them. And I know, Madam Chair, you and I had a conversation earlier about something else to do, and this just came to mind a few minutes ago, that I would like to see us pass a resolution of support for those striking workers.
Thank you. Maybe we can have it in GovOps next week?
Yeah, I think that'd be wonderful. I'm very supportive of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other item I have is that Ms. Najah Bazi with Zaiman International, she's been recognized. She has a location in Inkster, in my district, that provides incredible services for the low-income folks that live in the area. And she has food, not just food, but she has clothing, she has furniture, and she's an amazing woman. And she was just recognized by CNN as a hero, one of CNN heroes. And she's an amazing lady. And we will be preparing a resolution for her, and we will be doing that and probably be on the next agenda. But, you know, my Commissioner to my right, Commissioner Baydoun, and I are working on that, and he has a family connection to her. But I just wanted to mention that this will be forthcoming, but it's quite an honor to have someone that I know that is a CNN hero. And she was on television. There was a great deal of coverage on local news, as well as national, for her services and what she's provided to low-income residents.
Very good. We look forward to seeing that resolution. Thank you. Commissioner Baydoun and Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add to what my colleague mentioned here and eloquently stated, it's been said, and I quote, "The best among you are those who bring greatest benefits to others." In this era of so much hateful rhetoric being directed at a peaceful religion of 1.6 billion people, we are very proud of this Muslim-American CNN hero. She is truly an ambassador for humanity. Kudos to Haji Najah Bazzi for her tireless efforts to help the less fortunate. She is compassionate, considerate, thoughtful, kind-hearted, sympathetic, charitable, and benevolent. She is really going above and beyond to improve the lives of those needy people. She really deserves this recognition. And I just want to say also, she lives along with her husband and family in Melissa Dobbs, my colleague's, Commissioner Dobbs District in Canton. So, we would look for you also to be supporting this resolution, all of us, actually. And again, I want to say congratulations to Haji Najah Bazzi on this honor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. And if you want your remarks in the record, always make note to the clerk, and she'll put your remarks in the record if you would like that. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wonderful news to hear about Najah Bazi. She is a fabulous person. I did have the opportunity to meet her. She was actually going to be a partner with Hype when Hype moved in into its first location in Dearborn Heights. And so, I had the pleasure of meeting her, and literally, an angel walking among us. Gosh, she's one of the nicest people you ever met, and she does phenomenal work. So, if you do anything, I would love to be a part of that. And then also, because of all, I've had a lot of conversations with veterans from all across the county, not because I sought them out in different areas, but because of the stand-downs I've done over the years for veterans. I have a network of veterans that I know all across the county. And there's a real standout lady in Joey's district. Her name, her real name is... I have a network of veterans that I know all across the county. And there's, um, a real standout lady in Joey's district. Um, uh, her name, her real name is Roseanne Rudisil, but she goes by Anne. And she's going to be recognized as a hometown hero. We put a call into Joey's office, so not to step on any toes, so you could do a resolution for her. Um, but she is going to be at the Lions game if she, if she hasn't been already. At one of the Lions games, they're going to recognize her. I'm not a big football person, so he can probably speak to that better than I can. But, um, she is going to be recognized as a hometown hero there. And she also operates a pantry and, and, um, she, that lady goes above and beyond too. She, she drives people to the hos, she drives veterans to their hospital appointments and, and delivers food and, honestly, she's just, does anything that she can to help a veteran at her own personal time, many, in, in many instances, out of her own pocket. And, um, just, boy, every part, every one of us could use one of her in our district, and Joey's lucky to have her, and he knows it. So I just, I, I, when you'd go to, um, honor her, I would appreciate it if you would also, um, open that up to other commissioners, especially, um, those of us on the Veterans Committee and, um, anybody else who's interested, uh, because she's a great lady. So it's nice to see, um, some Wayne County, um, people being recognized at that level for the great work that we, that they do, and we're all lucky to have them in our districts. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson, the Commissioner Morecki.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let everyone know, I have asked that everyone be included in that unless they choose not to, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll make sure everyone gets on the one for, uh, the lady I spoke about. Thanks.
Commissioner Morecki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last full board, I had announced that DPS was coming back to COPS, um, to present the Wayne County Ten Year Road and Bridge Baseline Report of Findings. So they did come back again, and if anybody wa, wasn't there and would like this, um, report, we'd be happy to email it to you. So just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. To that point, real quick, you.
Yes, to that point, real quick, thank you. And I was in a SEMCOG class that whole day, so I couldn't make it, but I would absolutely love a copy of that report, and I appreciate you making it a way available to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Palomera.
Yeah, just following up on Commissioner Webb, rightly bringing that up, uh, Ms. Rudisil was honored at the Lions game this past Sunday, and, uh, as it helped the Lions won.
That's right. It absolutely did, thank God.
I'm so glad to hear that, thank you.
Commissioner Varga.
Joe, could we invite her to every game?
Right. We, we need that. We need that good luck charm. Any other comments by commissioners? So real quick, I'll just say that, um, yesterday, uh, back to what Commissioner Colleen spoke about with diversion programs, um, Judge Kenny and Judge Freddie Burton are really taking the lead on, uh, diversion in our county. Earlier this year, as you know, we had a, a group go down to Miami Dade County because they are the leaders in diversion and what they've done in their jail system. And, uh, we were happy to have them come to Wayne County on yesterday and today. When I say they, is, uh, Judge by the name of Judge Lifeman, who really led the charge down to Miami Dade County. Briefly, they had in their county jail, three stories of their floors, their thirteen floors, were dedicated to those with mental illness. And, um, News Report did a story on them and exposed how horrible the conditions were, how the suicide rate was terrible. It was just deplorable conditions. Fast forward, Judge Lifeman led Wayne, uh, Detroit, Miami Dade County constituents and elected officials to make some changes to the system. And now they have the best and the leading program as it comes to diversion and jail diversion. And one of the young men, that, um, he's been diagnosed with schizophrenia. He spent some time on one of those higher floors. Um, he is one of their star peer specialists now, working for Miami Dade County. He came here yesterday as well and gave his story. I think it brought tears to everyone's eyes, just to, just to do his life story, to see where he's come from and where he is now with a wife and child, and where he had been with drug addiction and schizophrenia and just all types of things. So now he's the person that goes out and gives that warm handoff when persons come out of the jail system and to wraparound services to make sure that they are getting what they need. So, and, and he did that for many years on a bus. And the, one of the commissioners down there, who was a good friend of mine, heard this, and she, uh, made it her business to make sure he had a car. So the county funded him a car, so he has a better way of picking up those individuals who need those services from jail to their treatment services. So they're in town, they're leaving this afternoon, but we had a wonderful meeting yesterday. They got a chance to talk to the prosecutor. Um, they're visiting some of our facilities today, uh, Well Path in Livonia, I think it is, and another, um, place today, and then they're off to speak, because they speak all across the country now. So we are doing great strides here in, uh, Wayne County, and I've been on this team for, um, this year. And I will thank this body because in two thousand and fifteen, we initiated the stepping up resolution, which is what this is, diverting folks from our jails with mental illness or substance abuse out of the jail into treatment. So we started this push back in two thousand and fifteen, is getting great momentum now again with Judge Kenny and Judge Burton. So I'll continue to keep you updated on the progress that we're making in that field because we want to be up there with Miami Dade County and one of the star counties that's doing a youngest job in preventing and keeping folks out of the jails who don't belong there. There are people who belong there, there are people who do not belong there. We want to keep those out who do not belong there. So I'll continue to keep you updated on that. Any other, um, comments by commissioners? Hearing none? Most adjourned? All right, have a great day. Meeting adjourned.
That's great news.
It's good, very good.
You've been working on that.
I know. It's, it's going, it's moving.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear it. That's huge, it's huge. If there's anything I can do. Hi. Pired, honey?